Welcome, everyone. My name is Grace Rink. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Climate Action Sustainability and Resiliency for the City and County of Denver, and I welcome you to this public hearing for the updated rules and regulations for the high-performance existing buildings ordinance, which we commonly refer to as the Energize Denver Program. The ordinance in full can be found in Chapter 10 of the Denver Revised Municipal Code. You're going to hear Energize Denver referred to throughout this hearing. I will now turn it over to Sharon J., who is the manager of the program. Thank you again for joining us.
Thank you, Grace. Welcome, everyone. This hearing is the culmination of intense work throughout 2022 on the implementation details of this program. So if you are one of the folks that joined a focus group or sent in previous comments, we thank you very much for your participation. My name is Sharon J., and I lead the team that is implementing the Benchmarking and Performance Requirements section of the Energize Denver Ordinance. Our whole team is online today: Maria Beranese, Daniel, Derek, Tom, and Sergio, and some folks from our help desk line. We also have an attendance Katrina Manigan, who is our Director of Buildings and Homes, and Lezard Zeku from the City Attorney's Office. So this is the setup for the public hearing. The meeting is being recorded, and the video and slides will be posted to our website next week. Participants are all muted. You can sign up for the public comment section by adding your name to the Q and A box. Each person will have three minutes to state their public comment during that time. If you have questions on the program, we encourage you to attend the trainings that are in December. This is a public hearing to adopt the rulemaking, the updated rulemaking, and so we'll be going through the background of the ordinance, the edits to the rulemaking section by section. Then we'll have a public comment period. Then we'll do the adoption of the rules and then close out with some information of what's going to be happening over the next couple of months. So if you thought this was a program training, those are actually going to be in December, and we'll have more information about that on our website tomorrow and at the end of this hearing. So we are part of the Office of Climate Action Sustainability and Resiliency. Because this is a new agency, we wanted to kind of put this information out there because we are growing rapidly to do all kinds of neat things on climate action and work on with our Climate Protection Fund. So for the Energize Denver Program, we are actually part of the Climate Action Division and the High Performing Building and Homes Division. So in Denver, commercial and multifamily buildings are 49% of Denver's greenhouse gas emissions, with the majority of those emissions coming from buildings over 25,000 square feet. So we've committed to eliminating greenhouse gas emissions by 2040 and very specifically in all existing buildings, working on getting them to net zero energy by 2040, which is the reason for this ordinance. We had a task force in 2021 that was tasked with trying to get our existing buildings to net zero energy by 2040. So in Energize Denver Ordinance, we have three different sections. We have our Benchmarking Section, which is implemented by our office, and it applies to buildings 25,000 square feet and over. We have our Performance Requirements, also implemented by our office, and it does minimum energy efficiency requirements for buildings 25,000 square feet and over. And then the buildings between 5 and 25,000 square feet have prescriptive requirements. Then it also has an electrification section. This section is implemented by community planning and development with assistance from our office, and it applies to all commercial and multifamily buildings and requires partial electrification of space and water heat upon system replacement when cost-effective. If you're interested more in the electrification side of things, I would encourage you to go to CPD's website as they are in the process of updating the 2022 building code, which includes requirements from this electrification section. So we have been benchmarking since 2016. That program in its whole pretty much has not changed. It applies to buildings 25,000 square feet larger. All of the buildings report their energy use through Energy Star Portfolio Manager, and it's due June 1st each year. We publish certain metrics from this program on our Energize Denver map. So for our performance targets, this is just a basic overview. We'll be going into more details about what's changed on the rulemakings in just a few slides. This also applies to all buildings 25,000 square feet and larger. The targets are set by four 70, more than 70, building types like office, multifamily, hotel. We use a baseline of 2019 and set interim targets in 2024 and 2027 on the way to a final EUI target in 2030. Mixed-use buildings will have a blended target based on a weighted percentage average of their three largest building types. And once you hit a particular target, then you have to maintain that EUI performance indefinitely. So a brief glance into the electrification requirements. So this is partial electrification of space and water heating equipment required in the building code upon system replacement when cost-effective. This is not saying that everybody has to go change out all of their natural gas equipment tomorrow. This is just done when you reach the end of your system and need to replace it. So what's happening in 2023 on March 1st? The permit process changes to near parity in permitting between a gas system versus AC and heat pumps. There's a whole lot more information. If you want to join us for the December 7th webinar, we will go into those requirements in detail. Then in 2025 and 2027, the building code will be updated again to address very specific pieces of equipment in each round of updating the building code. So the focus for today for updating the rulemaking in this public hearing is focusing on the Benchmarking Section and the Performance Section. So I want to give you a little glance into our development timeline over the past year. Between January and August of 2021, the Energize Denver Task Force convened and created the recommendations that turned into the Energize Denver Ordinance that was approved by City Council on November 21st, 2021. Then on January 13th, we did the first rulemaking for the Benchmarking and Performance Requirements and adopted them so that we would be able to send out the first round of EUI targets in March of 2022. In between November of 2021 and July of 2022, we were staffing up the Energize Denver team. So most everybody on the team, except for maybe one person, is new to working with the city of Denver and is implementing this program. So in between April and August, we did feedback sessions and meetings with stakeholders. And in between August and September, we did several rounds of public comment on the updated rulemaking and technical guidance manual. And then we noticed the public hearing to adopt the updated rules on October 17th. So that now puts us at today's date where we're having the public hearing. So in the stakeholder engagement, we had multiple different types of sessions. When we were looking at our process of exactly how we were going to implement the ordinance, we had four public sessions in June and July. We had multiple offline meetings with Excel Energy, the Solar Association, Data Center Association, a couple other associations, our Sustainability and Advisory Council Buildings and Homes Committee, the EPA, US Department of Energy, PNNL, and many more. We had multiple rounds of public comment on the Technical Guidance Manual and updated rulemaking. And then in our Under-Resource Building Assistance Program, we've been having stakeholder engagement meetings since March. We did five larger community connection sessions. We did four online listening sessions with property and facility manager groups, and then lots and lots of one-on-one conversations to gather feedback for that part of the program. So we'd still have some ongoing engagement happening. So for our manufacturing, agricultural, and industrial buildings, we have to complete their requirements by December of 2023. So we just completed a third round of stakeholder meetings. And if you're interested, please email us at Energize Denver, and we will get you looped into what's happening there. So for our small building prescriptive requirements, we are about to send out the mailers letting everybody know this ordinance exists over the next four weeks, and we need the building owners to claim their buildings. At this moment, all we have is a building list with information from the assessor's office, and we actually need really good contact information and emails for the person that's responsible in the building. So we just started industry vendor feedback sessions, and we are going to be starting building owner engagement in January so that we can finish the technical details of how we are going to implement the small building prescriptive requirements. So for both of these programs, it will involve another update to the rulemaking, which we hope to have complete by fall of 2023. So if you're interested in either one of these programs and being part of those focus groups, please let us know. So one of the things that we wanted to focus on this past year when we were implementing the program is designing in a lot of flexibility into the compliance program so that each building's compliance could be possibly adjusted to the situations in their building. And so these are some of the ideas that we have been working on that are now being incorporated into the rulemaking today. So things like, do I qualify for a target adjustment? That might be, I have a swimming pool or a data center or parking that I wasn't able to exclude for my benchmarking. This particular item actually adjusts the 2030 target. So one of the things we wanted to look at was incentivizing electrification. And so M is the building, 80% or more electrified, which is going to be based on a whole building percent electricity metric. This would actually adjust the 2030 target with a 10% bonus. So we did some alterations to the renewables credit. So we are allowing some short-term contracts now, which you'll hear about in just a moment. And so we wanted to make sure that we could be able to credit renewable energy towards a site UI to be able to fill in gaps. And then we did a lot of work on the timeline adjustment of exactly what needs to be turned in to be able to get the timeline adjusted to adjust an interim or and/or a final target. So now I'm going to go through each section of the rulemaking and tell you what has changed or what's been updated or what's been edited. So we'll go through those. Just a little quick reminder, if we're going to have the public comment section right after we go through all of this updated language, and so if you're interested in being part of the public comment section, please put your name in the Q and A. So in the definition section, we added definitions for a campus for the covered manufacturing, agricultural, and industrial buildings. We did a very specific definition on data centers so that we could split them into different categories. We did one for lighting power density, percent electricity, and then did a little bit more work on what's a tenant and what's a building owner. On the edited definitions, we added, we changed the wording a little bit in building owner. What is a covered building? Our director definition, what's existing building performance, and the site energy use intensity. On the added definition side, we added a whole new section on enforcement on exactly what our process is going to be, and I'll go into that in a little bit more detail later. But these are the definitions that we had to add because of the additional content on the enforcement. So Section 3 covers the Benchmarking requirements, and we added a clause for data use and confidentiality. So if an owner can demonstrate that the building's energy performance is a confidential business practice that includes trade secrets, privileged, or confidential commercial information, the owner can submit a request for the benchmarking submission to be kept confidential and will not be subject to Colorado Open Records Act requests or included in open data disclosures. This particular confidentiality thing used to be a reason for a benchmarking exemption, and we removed that exemption in November 2021. And so we needed to add this confidentiality clause back into the rulemaking. Then we added third-party data verification for the calendar years 2024, 2027, and 2030 to make sure that when folks are turning in their benchmarking data that's going to be evaluated for performance, that it has been verified by a third party. So Section 4 is specifically on the performance requirements for buildings 25,000 square feet and larger. If there's some super general edits, we moved several sentences from certain sections into other sections. So we created a new performance requirement section and then moved several sentences from other areas to put them into one section so it's a little bit easier to read and has a little bit more clarity to it. And then we added establishing an interim target process for existing covered buildings who have never submitted benchmarking data. We have never really been over 90% on our compliance rates for benchmarking. So we do have about 10% of the buildings that have to comply with this ordinance that have never submitted data. So we outlined a process of exactly how we are going to set their targets. So on the actual 2030 EUI target list, we made some adjustments based on some of the research and the stakeholder engagement that we have done over the last six months. So for data centers, we actually removed data centers entirely from the EUI target list and split them into two segments. The Class A data centers, which are where the data center is more than 15% of the building's square footage, were moved to manufacturing, agricultural, and industrial. And then data centers where it's less than 15% of the building's square footage are considered Class B, and those were moved to a target adjustment that's based on the square footage. Swimming pools as a building type was also removed from the EUI target list. We created a target adjustment for those instead. Drinking water treatment and distribution, energy power station, and other utility and wastewater treatment plants were moved to manufacturing, agricultural, and industrial category. Then for, there were several that we decided to change the EUI target to a general 30% reduction instead of having an actual EUI target, and those were indoor arena, other entertainment, public assembly, other technology and science, and transportation terminal and station. Parking was changed where we removed the old parking EUI, added three different types for standalone buildings. So if your parking structure is a completely separate from your building, including on energy use and is a standalone building where the only purpose of that building is parking, then we added EUI targets based on whether or not they're open, partially enclosed, or completely enclosed. And then if parking is a part of your building and can't be excluded from your energy data, then we created a target adjustment for that. So target adjustments used to be part of the alternate option, alternate compliance options section, and we moved it out of that section because all buildings should be able to do target adjustments. It's not really going to be considered an alternate compliance option from here moving forward. So we edited the definition of what a target adjustment was and added an application process. And so when you are turning in paperwork for a target adjustment, then you have to have your benchmarking data, third-party data verified, turn in the checklist, resubmit the benchmarking data because a lot of our target adjustments include correcting benchmarking data from previous years. And then a narrative is also included on exactly what are the conditions in your building, what target adjustments you qualify for, and then filling out that application. We also added a target adjustment for the electrification credit. So if your building hits 80% or more electricity as part of the total energy usage of the building, then you will get a 10% bonus basically on your EUI target. So let's say you were an office building and your EUI target was a 48. It would actually change to a 53 or 52 and a half on the targeted adjustment if you have reached where 80% of your total energy use is electricity. So in the timeline adjustment section, we made a lot of edits. In the previous rulemaking, we had two separate timeline adjustments, one for the regular buildings and then one for under-resource buildings. We decided to combine those because it's the same process for either one. And then under-resource buildings might qualify for other reasons other than the ones listed in the Technical Guidance Manual. We added or adjusted the reasoning language for the timeline adjustments. And then we outlined the application components for single buildings. So single buildings will be turning in an online application, an energy audit that meets the minimum requirements, a retrofit plan, and then supporting documentation that would support the request. Campuses have a separate application process that is basically the same thing with some wording slightly adjusted. So let's say, for example, University of Denver that has 50 some odd buildings that have to comply with this, they're going to be looking at it a little bit more at a campus level instead of individual building levels. So then we also added a section that this results in a timeline adjustment agreement that is the building's new compliance plan. That agreement will include the details of the retrofit plan and agreed-upon timeline of exactly when the targets are due, the reporting requirements, and then what penalties would be assessed if the plan is not completed as agreed. So then we also adjusted some other alternate compliance options. We added an electrification option for that 80% electricity if the building owner is interested in making electrification of their building. They're part of their compliance plan. We also added a 30% reduction property type adjustment option for buildings that have a 30% reduction target or historical buildings where the Landmark Preservation Board has limited what energy efficiency measures can be done in the building. We removed the prescriptive option for buildings 25,000 to 100,000 square feet. And then we made edits to the manufacturing, agricultural, and industrial option to separate the definition. Our definition of MAI buildings used to be within the alternate compliance option, and we moved that to the definition section. And then we added some language to clarify what's due in the rulemaking that has to be completed by December 1st, 2023. So in our demonstration of compliance section, we added clarifying language to the reporting section. We added an evaluation step where we are going to look at that electrification threshold of 80% for all of the buildings to see whether or not they've gotten to 80% to see if we have to apply the target adjustment before we evaluate their targets. In the renewables section, we actually changed it. The original version said solar, and we changed that to renewables so that we could have a little bit more flexibility in what renewables will be allowed in the future. And so the rulemaking language says renewables, but we are accepting both solar and wind for the foreseeable future. And then we clarified some language in the renewable submissions on exactly what needs to be turned in to prove that you have some renewable generation that we would apply to your EUI target. Then this is brand new. We added the ability to use short-term contracts for interim targets. So in the original rulemaking, we were only allowing long-term contracts to apply to any of the target compliance. And so what we are allowing is for interim targets only. So this is mostly focusing on 2024 and 2027. We would allow short-term contracts up to 20 or 10% of the building's electricity usage based on the target. And then for 2030 and beyond, short-term is not allowed. So that gives you some time to be able to either install solar on your building or off-site or look into off-site contracts by 2030 to make sure that those are in place. Then we also, for the renewable side of it, added a confidentiality statement if renewables are a confidential business practice, just like the confidentiality clause that we have in benchmarking. So this is your last chance to sign up for the public comment section. I only have about three more slides to go. So if you want to be able to do public comments, please put your name in the Q and A box now. So Section 5 is covering the performance requirements for buildings 5,000 to just under 25,000 square feet. We did a couple of little wording edits. We edited the lighting definition to clarify lighting load and then did edits to the solar section to change to the renewables wording, but again noting that ongoing stakeholder engagement is occurring over the next six months to build out the technical details for this program. So you have an opportunity to participate in focus groups to inform the 2023 update to the rules for this part of the program. So Section 6 covers disclosure upon sale. We moved this in the original rulemaking. It only applied to buildings 25,000 square feet and larger. We moved it to a different section so that it would apply to all covered buildings 5,000 square feet and larger so that the performance requirement progress, whether it's the small building prescriptive requirements or it's the large building performance requirements, is required to be transferred to the new building owner upon sale. So Section 7 is about enforcement and penalties. This section used to be about three lines long and about half a page, and now it's about five pages of content because we had to add our enforcement process. I'm not going to go through the whole entire section in detail, but what I'll do is give you a high-level overview. And so this is the enforcement process that we added. And this particular slide applies to the performance requirements. So every June, benchmarking is due. We have a couple of months in hazard to be able to do the performance evaluation. Then step one in the enforcement process is if we find a building that did not comply with their EUI target, the first thing that we'll do is send a warning notice. And so with that warning notice, the building owner is notified that they were not in compliance with the EUI target, and they have 90 days to apply for an alternate compliance option, most specifically going to be the timeline adjustment. If they do not apply for an alternate compliance option, then that warning notice basically turns into a notice of violation that we will mail out that has the actual citation and dollar amount that is going to be due. So from that date, that owner has 30 days to appeal, and there is a full appeals process in the rulemaking now. If the building owner has decided not to appeal, they have 180 days from the date of the notice of violation to pay the penalty. If they don't pay the penalty, then we work on placing a lien on the property until the penalty is paid. Okay, so now we're going to move into the public comment section. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and let Derek and Daniel take over this part.
Thanks, Sharon. First will be Claire Nicholson. And Claire, I can promote you in just a second to allow you to unmute yourself. And your three minutes begins now.
Hi. I guess I had a question about the
like responsibility of the owner. Like at the time of ownership, I'm not sure if I phrased that correctly. Like, I'm just looking at this added enforcement process and like, let's say the property was sold, like like towards the end of this timeline.
So quick question for you. Do you want me to use up some of your public comment time to answer the question? Or do you do you have any other thoughts that you want to share during your public comment time?
No other thoughts at this time. I'm excited about this policy.
Okay, the change of ownership so that the requirements stay with the building. But it is the building owner's responsibility to implement, you know, the actual requirements on the building. So if the building is sold to a new entity, then the the requirements of that EUI target kind of stay with the building and then the new owner is going to have to implement those targets. We do have a reason in the timeline adjustment so that if they want to, like, let's say, the the twenty twenty-seven target is due and the building ownership changes six months before the the target is due and the previous building owner didn't do anything. And so that puts that new building owner in a bad shape, then they would just turn in the time. They need to do some work and do some time, the timeline adjustment. Turn in that application, but then we would approve the timeline adjustment to be able to adjust those targets for the new building owner.
Excellent. Thank you. That's super helpful. I'm fully in support of the change from solar to renewables. I think that's a good option, especially for the small building requirement as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I'm going to mute you and Sullen Honeyshock, I apologize for probably pronouncing that incorrectly. I will go ahead and allow you to unmute yourself now.
It's actually Sue Ellen.
Sue Ellen, thank you.
Not a problem. It happens all the time. I put my name in the public chat just on the off-chance that I might have a question and and actually I don't, so.
All right. Thank you, Sue Ellen. And I don't see any other names in the chat, so that is the end of the public comment.
Okay. That was quick. Let me share my screen again. Okay. So let's move on to the adoption of the rules portion.
And that's over to me, right, Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, again, thank you so much. Thanks so much to our Buildings and Homes team, to our City Attorney's Office and to all of our stakeholders for the tremendous amount of work and time that you put into developing these rules. I approve these rules as published. And now Sharon, I'll turn it back to you to close us out.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so what's next? I only have about four slides worth of content and then we will wrap up this public hearing very quickly. So this is a big, big announcement that is going to go out in benchmarking citations in an email to everybody tomorrow in our Buildings and Homes newsletter, possibly a press release. This is it's kind of a big change and we needed to make sure the rules were adopted before we announced this. So we are going to, we are approving a timeline adjustment for one year for the twenty twenty-four target. And so what this mean, this is applied to all buildings that have a complete twenty twenty-one calendar year benchmarking report on file with our office. And that means that it's actually been approved by our office, not just submitted. So for the eighty-eight percent of our buildings that have actually turned something in and got their benchmarking report approved, it was due in June, so it's the twenty twenty-two reporting year, but it contains twenty twenty-one's calendar year data. For those buildings, the first interim target is going to be due in twenty twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-four. For buildings that are not in compliance with the twenty twenty-one calendar year benchmarking, the interim target will remain due in twenty twenty-four. And so we are going to be sending out benchmarking citations within the next couple of weeks with this language on there and all of those buildings of there's about three hundred or so out of our three thousand buildings that have not turned in their benchmarking. If they get their benchmarking turned in in the next couple of months, instead of paying that citation, then their target will be changed to twenty twenty-five instead of twenty twenty-four. So if you know of any of those buildings, please get in contact with them to let them know that this is, this is a thing and that they could get their interim target delayed by one year. Anybody can actually check their benchmarking compliance status by looking up their twenty twenty-two reporting year status on the Energize Denver map at energizedenver.org, or you can call into our help desk. But the easiest thing to do is actually look up your own building on the map. And if it says in compliance, then your target date will be twenty twenty-five. So for what's going to be happening in the next couple of days, actually, we are going to update our website tomorrow with a lot of new resources and a lot of new content. Our technical guidance manual that goes into much greater detail on exactly how you turn in applications, how we do performance evaluation, how you do an appeal. It's about fifty-five pages of content. It's going to be posted tomorrow with that updated website and lots of new materials. We do plan on having the technical guidance manual available in Spanish, and so that should be available in mid-December. Our benchmarking citations for the twenty twenty-two reporting year are going to be mailed on November twenty-eighth. And then we have kind of a high-level Energize Denver Summit that's going to cover all three sections of the ordinance at a high level. It's going to be in person on December first at the Nichols Building in Civic Center Building. So if you'd like to register, you can take a picture of the QR code real quick or go to this link. And this this is also available on our website. So if you go onto the website and go to the webinar library where our events page is, then you can also get to the link to register there. So we are going to have some very in-depth trainings available in December. And this is going to be a two-part webinar series on the technical guidance. December seventh is going to be part one. We're going to have about an hour of content and then thirty minutes of Q and A for each one of these. So part one is going to cover background of the ordinance, equity considerations, setting the twenty thirty targets, target adjustment process, the electrification credit and the renewables credit. And then we'll come back a week later on December fifteenth and do part two. This section is going to cover the alternate compliance options and their minimum requirements, what our performance evaluation process looks like and how we are going to assess penalties. So you can sign up for those two-part webinar series in the webinar library on our website. We are also going to have available tomorrow a vendor training video series. It's split into three parts. Once you do that, then you have to take a quiz. And then once you take the quiz and turn it into our help desk, then you can get your name added to a service provider directory where folks can look up your information and know that you are trained in our program. And so this is going to be available tomorrow in the Resource Center under the Training section. So January activity, we are going to reissue all of the twenty thirty targets to all buildings through email and the paper paper mailers. So that letter that all of the buildings received back in March, we are going to reissue that and remind everybody about benchmarking that's due in June twenty twenty-three. These target letters are going to include information on that one-year timeline adjustment also. Also in January, we're going to launch our online forms and applications. So if for the timeline adjustment or the target adjustment, those kind of things, those forms and applications are going to be ready in January. We are also going to launch our under-resourced building assistance. The application for this free technical assistance is available now. So you can go on our website right now as soon as we get off the the line of the hearing and go look up what an under-resourced building could be and what type of free technical assistance we're going to be offering. So additional materials are going to be added to the Energize Denver Hub in January and throughout twenty twenty-three as we build out new resources. So the best thing to do is sign up for our Buildings and Homes newsletter to get regular updates because every time we add something to the hub or update an application process or something like that, or do stakeholder engagement for the manufacturing buildings or small buildings, all of those activities that are going to be happening, we are always going to put them in our Buildings and Homes newsletter. So we encourage everybody to sign up for that. So if you have any questions, you are certainly welcome to call our Energize Denver Hub help desk. They give general support for benchmarking and performance requirements. They will be able to answer very small questions about electrification and the small building requirements, but we're working on building out more resources for those. So if you have any other questions, let's pause for a moment before we end the hearing and let's look at the queue, since we finished so quickly, a whole lot quicker than we thought we were going to. We could take a moment to answer some of the general questions in the Q and A.
Sharon, I can go ahead and read those questions. The first question is from Nick Smith. Are there any plans to create an open API with the benchmarking data of their major cities such as New York City, DC and Chicago have this feature?
Say that question again.
Are there any plans to create an open API with the benchmarking data?
Um, no. What we do, because in our data use statement that we have on the website now, there's only certain information that we disclose publicly once it's submitted to us. And so what we do is take the information that we disclose and put it on our open data catalog. So if you wanted to go to denvergov.org, go to the open data catalog, you can search for the word benchmarking and it gives you a spreadsheet of all of the data. But we don't plan on doing an open API at this moment. Doesn't mean that couldn't change in the future, but we did not consider it for for this round.
Thank you, Sharon. This recording will be made available. Do you know when that might be available?
It takes a little bit to convert this recording into a YouTube through our tech technology services group. And so I I would say this video would probably be ready and on our website by Monday, November twenty-eighth is going to be the best estimate. I don't know how quick it's going to happen before Thanksgiving break.
That's a good guess. When will the target adjustments be communicated?
Um, tomorrow on the website. So as soon as we we post the technical guidance and all of the updates to the website, you'll be able to see what's available.
All right. And one more question. Could you explain, oh, could you explain how you will monitor the short-term ten to twenty percent renewables when some of these subscriptions could be implemented on a monthly basis, i.e. through Windsource?
Right. And and it's mostly the Windsource program is what we were thinking about when we we added this particular thing. So what has to happen is part of the renewables credit, you have to turn in the kilowatt hours that were generated during the months during the performance evaluation time. So let's say your target is twenty twenty-four. What we're looking at is all of your energy use during the calendar year of twenty twenty-four. And so the kilowatt hours generated have to equal those exact same months in twenty twenty-four. So what happened in June of twenty twenty-five, when you turn in your benchmarking data, you will also submit a separate submission for the renewables and you'll have to say, this is how many kilowatt hours were generated in under my subscription in these months. And we're only allowing the months that were during the performance period. And so you're basically reporting the kilowatt hours generated after they were generated. So they're generated in twenty twenty-four and then you're turning them in with your benchmarking submission in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And there's one more question right now. Where is the link to see the specific type of technical assistance available for URBs? I'm seeing info about the stakeholder engagement process for developing these resources, but not the resources themselves.
Right. So we are finalizing the resources. We just had our last stakeholder engagement meeting about two or three weeks ago. And so right now it's available on the website for the next four to five weeks is just the process getting in the application. And then we are going to be publishing, we have to work out some behind-the-scenes details of exactly how the process is going to work to implement the technical assistance. So that is what's going to get updated in January when we launch that. And so it involves some general support, some more extensive support for benchmarking. And then based on some prioritization and things like that because of course, as a city program, we we have a certain amount of funding. It could also include ASHRAE Level Two Energy Audits, helping with vendor scope of work definition, contracting to get the work done, that kind of thing. So we are finalizing those support packages now. And so on January third, we'll have an update to the website that actually talks about the technical assistance. So the best thing for everybody to do is if you think you may qualify for under-resourced assistance, then fill out the application and then we can have a conversation with you to talk a little bit more about what's planned in January.
Can Barry Nese provide that form link in the chat? Would anybody have access to that?
The the chat, the chat.
No, I don't think so.
No, but but if like, if you go to the website literally right now, there is a big equity button that says equity under-resourced buildings on the main page of the Energize Denver Hub. And so that will take you to the page. That page really isn't changing much with tomorrow's update. So you should be able to find it from the main page of Energize Denver Hub.
And one more just came in. How can we make sure our building management is on your distribution list for the January communication?
I would say, so we do the distributions in two ways. In the newsletter, like have them sign up for the newsletter, which is available on the website. There's a little link on the side that lets you fill out the form. But also in our database, basically our CRM database where we keep everybody's contact information, that is where we get contact emails and that's one of the emails that come directly from our office that are more specifically around compliance requirements. You just need to call in to the help desk or send the Energize Denver email an email saying, I want this person, this is my building ID. I would like this person to be put on the contact list. And then we can make sure that the compliance emails that are usually now in the past only been sent out for benchmarking would also, they would also get performance emails also. And so we just need to basically market in our system that that particular person is going to be on the email list when we send out compliance notices. So best thing to do is probably send it to energizedenver@denvergov.org and put in your building ID number or at a minimum your address of the building so we can add that person's information.
Thank you, Sharon. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending the public hearing, for the public comments. We had such incredibly good comments in August and September and October to help us inform this program. So we really, really appreciate it. I hope everyone is safe driving home this evening and has a really good Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.